This is town council meeting, January 16th, 2018, at the Haverghery Room, which is being recorded. I'll call to order, pledge allegiance first. Mr. Boncori, would you allow?
Yes.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Before we start the official part of the meeting, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the town employees, specifically the police and fire, DPW workers, the medical reserve corps, which he may have here with her group, for the phenomenal job they did during the recent storm that we went through about a week ago. It was much more severe than we anticipated in terms of storm surge, but the town, really, the town workers did an excellent, excellent job. Congratulations and thank you for a job well done. With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the, well, first of all, roll call.
Councilor Ringman.
Here.
Councilor Calla.
Present.
Councilor Christopoff.
Here.
Councilor Terry.
Yes.
Councilor Sero.
Here.
Councilor McDuffie.
Here.
Councilor LaConti.
Here.
Vice President Boncori.
Here.
President Beckia.
Here.
Thank you.
Minutes of the meeting of January 2nd was circulated. I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 2nd.
Second. Second, by Mr. LaTerry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The first item on the agenda, official item, is the presentation by the Winter Board of Health, a gentleman and lady at here this evening. This is a discussion on new tobacco regulations for the town of Winthrop.
First of all, before I begin my official remarks, I'd first like to congratulate Council President Beckia and new Consuls Lucerto, McDuffie, and LaConti on their first meeting. It's a pleasure to be here. For the record, my name is Bill Schmidt, and I am currently vice chair of the Winter Board of Health. I'm here with fellow Board of Health member Susan McGuire. The mission of Winter's Board of Health is to protect, promote, and regulate public health in the town of Winthrop. The Board of Health assumes a proactive approach in dealing with the challenges of public health. We are here tonight to present to the town council proposed changes to the regulations of the Winter Board of Health restricting the sale of tobacco products. As the regulation states, this regulation is promulgated pursuant to the authority granted to the Winter Board of Health by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 31, which states Boards of Health may make reasonable health regulations. Even though not required by law, the Board of Public Health will be holding a public hearing on Tuesday, January 23rd, at 6:00 PM in the Lyceum at the E.B. Newton School Building to hear comments from interested citizens, retail store owners, and other parties. We are here before you tonight as part of our community outreach effort to hear your comments and concerns. Our proposed changes are based on the sincere belief that they will benefit the public health of our fellow citizens in the town of Winthrop. We are mindful of the authority that we have been given. The current Winter regulations were promulgated by the Board of Health in 2015, which included two members of the present town council. The regulations contain many excellent provisions, including prohibitions on free distribution and coupon redemption, out-of-package sales, self-service displays, vending machines, non-residential "roll your own" machines, and the sale of tobacco products by educational institutions. In addition, there are sections dealing with required signage, tobacco sales permits, violations, non-criminal disposition, and enforcement. Our proposed changes are intended to strengthen the regulations so that they are among the best in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Over a year ago, the Board of Health was contacted by a Massachusetts pediatrician and co-founder of the Mass Tobacco 21 campaign with a request to attend one of our meetings and testify about the effort to raise the minimum legal sales age from 18 to 21 in cities and towns across the state. Several months later, the pediatrician appeared before the Board of Health to prevent, to present his views. At the same time, our regional municipal tobacco and public health policy agent, funded by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, requested that the Board of Health consider adding other changes to the regulations that have been adopted by surrounding communities. After several monthly meetings of the Board of Health, which are open to the public, and much discussion and debate, the present members of the Board passed the draft regulation, which is the subject of tonight's presentation. The draft regulation contains nine changes to the existing regulations as follows. Raises the minimum legal sales age from 18 to 21. Limits flavored other tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, to adult-only retail tobacco stores. Bans product sales in healthcare institutions, including pharmacies. Bans the sale of blunt wraps. Reduces the number of tobacco product sales permits to be issued from 20 to 18. Requires single cigars to be sold for at least $2.50 and multi-packs of two or more cigars for at least $5. Prevents tobacco sales permits to be issued to new retailers within 500 feet of a school. Extends the enforcement or tolling period from 24 months to 36 months. And permits the non-renewal of a tobacco sales permit to a retailer with three illegal sales to a minor within a year. I will now address the issues of raising the minimum legal sales age to 21 and banning the sale of blunt wraps. Susan will then address the issues of limiting flavored other tobacco products, including e-cigarettes to adult-only retail tobacco stores, and banning sales in healthcare institutions, including pharmacies. We will then be open to hearing your comments and concerns about these four issues, which are the major ones, as well as the remaining five issues. Raising the minimum legal sales age to 21 will reduce tobacco use and nicotine addiction among youth, which will improve health, save lives over time, and reduce healthcare costs. Tobacco use and nicotine addiction is the leading cause of preventable illness and premature death in our Commonwealth, and cost our state billions of dollars for healthcare each year. Our youth are very susceptible to nicotine addiction because it affects the development of the brain, and more than 80% of cigarette smokers begin using before age 18. As I said, many cities and towns have enacted policies to reduce tobacco use and nicotine addiction that go beyond current federal and state laws and regulations. Raising the minimum legal age age for all tobacco products to age 21 is an effective strategy for reducing youth tobacco use since it removes legal access to tobacco products from our high school social networks. This is similar to when we raised drinking age. The Institute of Medicine projects that raising the legal age to 21 across the state would reduce overall tobacco use by 12% or 150,000 Massachusetts tobacco users. And the Federal Center for Disease Control reports that 75% of adults support raising the age to 21, including 70% of current smokers. Let me talk about blunt wraps for a second. Blunt wraps are defined as any tobacco product manufactured or packaged as a wrap, or as a hollow tube made wholly or in part from tobacco that is designed or intended to be filled by the consumer with loose tobacco or other fillers regardless of any content. Blunt wraps are usually highly flavored, which appeal to youth, and usually cost less than a dollar. Banning the sale of blunt wraps has been supported by members of the law enforcement community because the product has been exclusively, almost used always, for substances other than tobacco. The public health goal we have is to reduce nicotine dependence by blunt wrap use and reduce illegal substance use. Boston, Chelsea, Revere, Saugus, Everett, Lynn, and Medford are among the municipalities that have banned the sale of blunt wraps. Also, only six of the 19 retail tobacco sellers in Winthrop sell blunt wraps. Susan.
So, Council President Beckia.
Good evening.
Vice President Boncori and fellow Consuls, thank you for this chance. And I'm a little anxious, this is my first time doing this, and I'm still feeling a bit of a bore, so I can do my best. So I'm going to be addressing restricting the sale of flavored products, flavored tobacco products, to adult-only retail stores. The reason for this discussion actually would arise from a concern from our chief, Delahanty, about vaping in, by our youth, mainly in high school and also in the middle schools. And that started a lot, a big discussion, and it was quite an education for both me and my fellow colleague here, Bill. So, e-cigarette use among youth and young adults is now a major public health concern. I apologize that you've got some materials late, so you've got them today, but there's a lot of backup material that you can look at going forward. There's a 2016 report, two pages from the Surgeon General Report, and he has announced that it's now a major public health concern. E-cigarette use has increased considerably in recent years, growing an astounding 900% among high school students from 2015 to 2011. So it's alarming. And the way these e-cigarettes are used mainly is through vaping. So that's where the main education came in. So there are different forms of e-cigarettes. There are e-cigarettes that are individual cigarettes that are disposable, and then there are cigarettes, e-cigarettes, that have a cartridge, and it has a heater in it, and then a fluid is put in, and then the fluid is heated, and then a vapor can be emitted, and the person inhales and then exhales a vapor, which is like a cloud, but it's a water vapor. And think of an aerosol. People will say that it's less, it's less harmless than cigarettes, which it may be because it's not combustible, and you're not getting all the tars from the tobacco, et cetera. However, it is not harmless. There are chemicals broken down, and unfortunately, it is still early, it's too early, in the use of these products to understand what all the health risks are to date. Bill has mentioned the chance of addiction in our youth from the use of nicotine, and our youth are getting addicted quite quickly with the use of this product. There's a new product on the market, it's called a Juul, and I meant to bring one tonight. It's called, capital J-U, it's all caps, J-U-U-L. It's a cartridge about this big, it's deceiving because it comes with a charger, and you can plug it into your laptop on the side, and the, this is the main product that youth are usually using today in the schools. They're using it in the classrooms, they're using it in the bathrooms, et cetera. They can charge it on their laptop, one pod that goes in that supplies the liquid that will create the vapor is equal to one pack of cigarettes. And it depends on how much the child uses, or they call it vape. Some children don't see it as smoking, they say, "I vape." So they are getting nicotine, they're getting addicted quickly, and we're not sure how they're getting this product, but that's the reason we'd like to restrict it to, over, to this, sorry, adult-only tobacco stores. The FDA is not regulating this product yet. They have put it off, they are looking at it. So the products, all these vaping liquids that they buy, they come, they're targeted up to our youth. They come in candy flavors, so popcorn, cotton candy, taffy, I can't remember, some fruit flavors, and the packaging is created to attract the children. So when a child goes into a convenience store, they see this, they're attracted to it, and this is in addition to all the flavored cigars, cigarelos, to pack, loose tobacco, et cetera. 101 communities currently in Massachusetts restrict this, and we see more coming. Again, biggest risk is for the child's developing brain, which can result in learning and cognitive deficits, and there's a high susceptibility to addiction, not only to nicotine, but to other drugs. It can result in mood disorders and impulse control and other conditions. The problem got serious back, well, it's been serious, and Principal Crombie called a school-wide meeting with the high school parents, some students came, et cetera, and he had a panel of five people to start addressing the issue about vaping in the school. This was held in November. It was attended about 50 to 70 people, and it was just the beginning. A person, Leanne Urisione from Casa was there, and she reported the preventive health assessment, preventive needs assessment done in the high school in 2016, had a question about vaping. And the results showed that over 60% of the students reported that they had vaped. This is just at the high school, we don't have the data for the middle school children. As a result of that meeting, and knowing that the issue is there, as I said, daily bathroom checks are being done. The high school has come up with strong suspension policies if a child is found vaping. Some vaping is done in a group setting, so a group could be at risk of suspension as well. The Board had talked about doing some community education, so we, while working with Casa, I'm happy to say that Leanne has spearheaded that effort in planning a community seminar on vaping, so it will be community-wide, not just restricted to the high schools. Mainly for education and what can we do to address the issue. And it's just not here in Winthrop, it's widespread. Only the other day, we received an email from Chris Sweeney, a police, on the police force in Maynard, and he is bringing in representatives from the Juul company to talk about, talk about the issue. He has invited schools from the local community, pretty, pretty widespread communities, so.
And Winthrop will be well represented there, Deanna Frederick, also Bonnie Carroll, representative of the Police Department will also be in attendance at that.
Great, thank you. I think those are the main things I'd like to mention, why we looked at this and we'd like to restrict this, propose, we're proposing that it be restricted to sales only in adult tobacco stores. The next one is prohibiting sales in health institutions. As you all know, I'm sure, CVS banned the sale of tobacco products in 2014, and the general feeling is, we see pharmacies as, they're defined as part of the healthcare institution definition. And I'm an nurse by profession, and I see a pharmacy playing a role in helping anyone that comes to them in promoting good health. As we know, tobacco, as Bill mentioned, tobacco is the number leading cause of preventable death, and so it's a consensus that it should, a pharmacy should not be a place where you should be able to buy cigarettes. We do see a role, we're looking at tobacco cessation, how can we help people in our community smokes, stop smoking if they desire to? And we're working with Deanna, she's done a number of things, we went to a training last week, and I see our, one pharmacy that sells tobacco hopefully helping us in that, in that role. Right now, there are 160 communities in Massachusetts that ban the sale of tobacco in pharmacies. I don't know if I mentioned, I'm going to go back to the flavored products, I may have mentioned how many flavors, I don't know if I did, but over 7,000, close to 8,000 flavors.
We'll be happy to answer any questions, get your comments, et cetera. Open it up to the council. Questions, comments?
Yeah, a couple of questions. When you mentioned about vaping in schools and bathrooms, so when a teacher comes in, is that, can you smell it, like when they exhale that vapor, is there any residual smell left behind?
According to what I've read, sometimes you might get a sweet, that might, depending on what flavor they're vaping, there might be a sweet smell, but possibly not.
Which is pretty tough to detect.
And it's a water vapor, what you do apparently in school, they, they would just, they may vape when the teacher turns to the blackboard, and people vape into their arm. So it's still, and actually being done in the classrooms as well.
Couple more questions that came to mind was, when you referenced adult tobacco stores, I'm not quite sure what that exactly means, what does that mean?
So, an adult tobacco store can carry, could carry these, any tobacco product as well as tobacco.
How do you define an adult tobacco store? What does that mean?
I'm going to have to go back, let me go back to.
Would there be like a liquor store?
No liquor, no liquor will be sold there, but they can sell cigarettes, all tobacco products, flavored tobacco products, and paraphernalia. So it would be the devices for smoking or vaping. E-cigarettes is hookah, is it a hookah?
Yeah.
We may have a full definition here.
Well, tobacco-related products, which are inherently above 18 years of age would.
Well, if we went.
I just never heard that question.
Yeah, it's, it's a situation where you have basically a.
There is a definition.
Yeah.
Retail tobacco store, an establishment that is not required to possess a retail food permit whose primary purpose is to sell or offer the sale to consumers, but not for resale, tobacco products and paraphernalia, in which the sale of other products is merely incidental, and in which the entry of persons under the age of 21 is prohibited at all times, and maintains a valid.
Under 21?
That's if we raise the age, yeah.
And maintains a valid permit for the retail sale of tobacco products as required to be issued by the Winter Board of Health. That's on page five.
Do we have any of these tobacco stores at Winthrop?
We don't.
Okay. Is, is there non-nicotine vape, vapor vape, or everything, all vape is nicotine, has nicotine in it?
I understand there are, no nicotine, I guess there is, I guess there are some products. I know this Juul product that I'm talking about, they don't have it, but I believe there may be some on the market.
Susan.
Yes.
Hi, sorry. Hi. There are a couple of products that are marketed as non-nicotine products, but because the electronics for computer devices are so new regulation-wise, there's no really kind of authority on whether they are or they aren't. There was a study done where 25 of the highest-selling retail products that claimed to be no nicotine or low nicotine were all tested, and they came back positive as including nicotine. So the devices themselves are made to deliver nicotine. The question is just can you ask, so to answer your question, if it's an electronic device, yes, it is.
And just to back up there, the problem in enforcement is that we don't know if the nicotine or not nicotine, and by the time they get them in the tube, it's almost impossible for us to determine if there's nicotine or no nicotine in that device. That's why it's very important that we have a broadband on this type of e-cigarette vaping mechanisms, because even the liquid that's not nicotine is going to be harmful, there's no studies out, as we heard at the State House the other day, we can't wait for the state to act to protect our children. It certainly was raised, when I was the police chief, by many people calling my office, parents outraged about convenience stores selling these vapes to their minor children. And we researched it with Deanna and Bonnie Carroll, who's our tobacco enforcement officer, and there was really no legislation that we could act on. So we, you know, we certainly, I think, resolved one problem in one of the stores, and then, but this is, you know, we should have a ban on this stuff, regulation, that everyone knows what the playing grounds are, and it's easy for the officers to enforce. And when you went, just one more question.
Please.
You spoke earlier about 500 feet within the school, is it, did somebody mention that?
Oh, 500?
Yeah.
No, there is a proposed regulation, not for existing stores, but if a new store were to open, it would prevent any new store within 500 feet, so there is, if there are stores now.
There is a grandfather clause?
Yes, it's written for new stores.
A new, a new retailer.
Yeah, so it wouldn't affect an existing store or stores.
Mr. President, so I have some real concerns about raising the tobacco age from 18 to 21. As much as I think it's, tobacco smoking is indisputably unhealthy and dangerous, taking adults' rights away is a real concern for me. And I'm wondering, before kind of getting to the step of proposing this regulation, what has the Board of Health done education-wise to try to prevent it in that capacity before taking rights away?
Well, we don't have a budget, so it's very hard for us to spend any kind of money through educators. We obviously can do so at our meetings, there are efforts being, you know, taken in the schools to talk to students, but we certainly can't compete in terms of communication with the tobacco industry and those type of things. And again, this, this effort is not unique to us. This is, in fact, almost all the surrounding communities in the packet, I think, that you have, received a map of the state, which shows basically that, you can see here, the ones in green are all the states that have adopted 21, and Winthrop is quite frankly almost an old island in white in the middle there, where we haven't done so. So more than, more than 70% of the residents live in communities where the, the minimum legal sales age has been 21, including all of our surrounding communities, whether it be at Chelsea, Boston, et cetera. So we think it's in the best interest of the, the health of our young people to do this.
A second question I have is about Brown's Pharmacy would be hit particularly hard, not just not being able to sell to anyone under 21, but not sell any tobacco products. And I'm wondering what the feedback has been from Brown's Pharmacy regarding this potential regulation?
Well, we are, we are inviting all of the retailers, we're sending a letter to all of them with a copy of the regulations, all 19 of the retailers, to be able to come to the public hearing, or if they can't attend, to submit testimony in writing. And in fact, I, I hope Brown's is there, if not, I would, myself, will talk to them, because we'd like to have an understanding of what the impact might be on their business, and in fact, might they, might they be willing to do something in terms of promoting individuals to not smoke as a healthcare institution, similar to what a CVS has done?
And my final question is about the 500-foot rule from schools. I'm wondering exactly which commercial, commercial stretches in town does that cover? How far into the CBD does that go? Does that cover 7-Eleven if a new business were to go in there? What sort of business areas are we talking about would be restricted under that, that 500-foot rule?
Well, I don't have a map in front of me, but basically, it's for new retailers, so there's another provision in the, in the regulations that restricts also the number of permits. So a new, a new retailer in town wouldn't be able to operate a tobacco sales if there's a cap on the permits, which we do have. So first of all, in order to be a tobacco retailer, it would have to be an available permit. But again, this is for new, new retails, and in fact, just to also to give you the numbers, again, to kind of show you where we are in this, that there are, there is a number of communities over 60 that have, that have adopted this around the state. Thank you.
Any further questions from the council?
I have a bunch of questions and comments. First of all, I'm absolutely in agreement with, with Councilor LaConti that we shouldn't be raising the age to 21. I feel that if a young man, a woman, is old enough to vote, old enough to go into the service and give up their life for the country, I don't see why they can't smoke if, in their mind, they want to smoke. I think smoking is wonderful, and I don't condone anyone to start smoking, but the person has a right to have their own enjoyment, that's what our constitution gives us. And if this person can go and fight and die for our country, he should be able to light up a cigarette when he's on break, if that's what he feels like doing. And if it's a pleasure from that, we're trying to take that away from him. And I think that's not something that Winthrop should be doing. Number two, I don't think the entire regulation that the health is proposing is business-friendly at all. I think you're scaring businesses away from coming into Winthrop. We're going to be developing a new center business district, and we're going to be looking for new people to come in. Right now, we have 19 places in Winthrop that sell cigarettes, but your new ordinance is cutting it down to 18 and saying, you're hoping, I guess, that Brown's is going to go away without a fight. But, you know, that's taking business away from a person who's been in business for hundreds of years and doing his own thing, and why would you now, all of a sudden, say you can't do what you've been doing for 100 years in your own establishment? It doesn't make sense to me, and it doesn't seem business-friendly. Going down the line, you're going to ban these blunt wraps and roll your own machines. Going down the line, you're going to ban these blunt wraps and roll your own machines. But the state of Massachusetts has passed a medical marijuana law now that is gonna be putting recreational marijuana in. At the current time, there is medical marijuana that's allowed in the state, and there are people who grow their own marijuana for their own use in their homes. If they can't get those blunt wraps in their convenience store or their own, roll their own machines, it may be limiting their access to their medicine, because these people that grow their own, roll their, and get those blunt wraps in the convenience stores. And, uh, I don't think we should be limiting their ability to get blunt wraps or roll your own machines. The next thing is that your regulations are raising the price of a product. And what right does the town of Winter to raise a price of something that's only is selling in the store? I mean, um, can we tell Jim Luteri, you have to sell your subs for twelve fifty, you can't sell them for eight dollars anymore? We could do that, but it's, it's not right to, a person wants to, to run a sale in his, his business and you're gonna tell him you cannot? Do you have to charge a price that the town is setting for you to charge? It's, it's not what we do. Uh, and lastly, or not lastly, but next, I'm looking at fines. And you're putting in fines for a first offense of a smoking offense at three hundred dollars. I don't think there's any other fine in this town that's three hundred dollars for, unless it's a third or fourth offense.
I believe that's the correct.
For a first offense, three hundred dollars. Most fines in Winter are twenty-five dollars, maybe fifty, and you're asking for a three hundred dollars. Thirdly, enforcement. Who's gonna enforce it? And I think that's our major problem when you're talking about kids smoking. Kids should not be smoking. They should not definitely be smoking in high school or in middle school. We couldn't do that when we were in middle school or high school, but it was enforced. If someone was smoking in a bathroom in school or anywhere in the school grounds, they got thrown out of school for a week. That's the enforcement that needs to be done to teach kids not to smoke, not take away the right of the eighteen to twenty-one year old persons who should have the ability to make up their own minds. And finally, the tobacco community sheet that was put out by, I believe it came from you people, it shows that Winter, at the present time, has a lower rate of smokers than the average in the Commonwealth. That, that we only have like fourteen point six smokers to the average of the town being, state being fifteen point six. Yet, our lung cancer rate is huge, eighteen or sixteen points above the state average. You should be look, so obviously it's not the smoking that's causing the lung cancer here. It's the airplanes. It's the stuff that's coming out of the sky into our lungs. That's what you should be focusing on and not taking away rights from people. Okay, I'm done.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President, you want me to address them also?
Please.
A couple of those that you mentioned, Councilor Von Corry, who is my neighbor across the street, by the way.
Yes.
And a very good neighbor.
Right.
The, the issues that you may mention on fines is in the current regulations, those are not new changes. As well as the, the, the ban on the roll your own machines is also in the existing one, which is not for somebody to have a roll their own in their own home, but in a public place. Those two are not new, they've been there for quite some time, uh, by the previous board, actually. A couple of things, um, and I understand there's, there's strong feelings about raising the age, but we also have a situation in Massachusetts where you can't go into a liquor store, can't go into Swett's or any other liquor store and buy liquor unless you're twenty-one. New marijuana legislation calls for twenty-one. When Wind builds his casino, you won't be able to enter there unless you're twenty-one. So eighteen is not a magic age for everything. Um, I understand, stand your point of view and it has been expressed by, by many people, but, but it isn't a unique age. And I, I understand what you, what you are saying about enforcement, that's, that's, that's part of the issue. Um, and, but it's not the only thing. And I think, as you know, I've, I have taken an active interest in, in the issue on the airplanes. Just a couple of weeks ago, with a member of the Hazards, Airport Hazards Committee, we spoke with the CEO of Cape Air about the, the issue of leaded gas being used in small planes. And, and plans for him, he's talking about gonna be changing his fleet and other efforts. So we are looking at a number of issues, not just tobacco, but this is an important one. It's the leading preventable cause of death, uh, cause from smoking. So it's a significant issue.
Councilor.
Sure, thank you. I'd like to thank Board of Health for their work on this proposed regulation and the changes to the regulation. I think increasing the, the smoking age or the tobacco purchasing age to twenty-one is a really important step in getting tobacco out of the hands of our high school kids. I think it's incredibly important. I can remember from my own high school experience, having the seniors purchasing tobacco products for younger kids, and I'm, I know it's still happening. So I think it's great. Um, and I think the policy, uh, the proposed new policy in Winter is certainly consistent with, uh, the policy in our surrounding communities and consistent with the state and national trends as well. Uh, the only comment I would offer is to please consider adding a grandfathering clause for existing healthcare institutions in Winter to maybe selling tobacco products so that we are not having a drastic change in, in an existing business. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor.
I have stole a lot of my thunder. Uh, I was gonna ask to consider thinking.
You were first.
Yeah. Asked to consider the grandfather for an existing business that would be affected in Brown's. It seems like it's a very small percentage, um, of sales. Um, but I also think what's really important is to keep this community dialogue going and try and advertise as much as possible that this public hearing is going, it's gonna happen, because clearly there, there's passionate responses to moving forward with this initiative or stopping it. Um, and I just think it's really important that we get out in front of the public and get as much feedback as possible. Uh, but I also wanna thank you guys for the work that you're doing. Clearly, uh, you put a lot of effort into it. And, um, the presentation that was done at the high school, I think some of those statistics that Casa had, uh, would be really eye-opening for a lot of people. I was really surprised. So I think that most people in town would also be very surprised and they should hear that.
Any further questions, discussions, comments, by council?
Councilor Vekke, just thank you very much. I just wanna point out there will be a, a legal ad in the transcript on Thursday about this. We're hope to be on the, the manager's blog. Um, so we're doing everything we can to promote this. We're going to appear before the school committee next Monday night. We're gonna appear before the PTO on the twenty ninth. So we're doing what we can to, to spread the word and we wanna hear from everybody in the community.
When is the public hearing?
Public hearing is a week from tonight. Uh, at six o'clock in the Lyceum, at six o'clock in the E.B. Newton School.
Thank you very much for your time. Yes.
I think there's one other comment. I don't know if Vice President Von Corry, the fines, that three hundred, three hundred, three hundred, those are in the current regulation, so we did not, um, change that nor reduce them.
We changed it the last time.
Yeah, the last.
We changed it the last.
Yes, yes.
Last year.
But apparently we're learning that now a lot of communities are doing that. They're not incrementally increasing them, it's starting at three hundred. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Before you, you move on to the next item, I just wanted to say that, you know, this e-cigarette issue had creeped up on the schools. They have to have their regulations in the following May, following May for the new school year, so it's, it's not that they're not willing to suspend people, it's, you know, technicality in their book, and tobacco suspensions still exist. Both the schools, we have a diversion program with Casa, they don't have to suspend kids because that's the last thing we want, is to have them on the street during the day, so we try to use the diversion program as much as possible.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that. And the athletic, um, and athletes are effective too. It's, if they are found, they are off the team for a certain period of time. So they're taking it very seriously.
Thank you. Thank you again. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by the town CFO, Michael Perez, on a financial software program.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I will try to keep this brief. Uh, it's a very detailed topic, but, um, quite dull. So the financials and human resources system is pretty much the backbone of our internal operations. It touches virtually everything that we, the town employees do. But the systems that we have in place right now are archaic. So I think, um, one of the best places to start is just showing what our current systems are like. And so to do that, I've got a screenshot of the opening screen of Softrite, which is our financial system. Now, this is, this is what you see when you actually enter the system, and that little window is, is the system. And, um, it, if you can't read it, that's, wow, that's the size it is. It's not possible to change. Uh, it looks like it's something out of the late eighties. Uh, it has not been updated in a number of years. The company who owned Softrite was purchased by a company called Essella, who was then purchased by another company. Softrite will at some point be phased out, uh, and another product would be brought in to replace it. And so there would have to be a conversion at some point, it's just a question of when. In terms of financial systems in Massachusetts municipalities, there are realistically three options. There's Vader, there's Softrite, and there's Munis. Vader is really only used by the smallest communities and would not be appropriate for our scale. Softrite is not really appropriate for our scale, so that really leaves Munis. Now, the, the main thing with Softrite Financials is the chart of accounts. That's what really powers all of the financial transactions, where, where the budget lines are, where the expenditures go. Now, when you're actually setting up the chart, it's somewhat of an arbitrary process, and there are actually ten different, uh, fields that you can set at, at different increments so that you can have split across different things, on different account types, on different funds, on different departments. It's, it's relevant because not every department has every single line. But the way it works in Softrite is each of those fields are individual, but then there's a combined field that is supposed to be some preset selection of the other fields, but it is independent of those. So if you type in that number wrong, then that is the number and it would no longer match what the actual numbers are. And if that's not making sense, then, um, it's right on track. You can also not change that at any point during the year. Once the year has begun and there has been a transaction, it is frozen forever. So that's somewhat of the challenge with the chart of accounts. Uh, with actual accounts payable transactions, there are an extremely limited number of fields that can be used, and it's all manual entry. And each invoice really gets one entry into this. So when you actually want to know the details of what was paid for any particular invoice, we have no way of doing that without physically getting a copy of that invoice from our files. So that's extremely cumbersome. It is something that makes our annual audit take a substantially longer amount of time than it should. It makes all of our management processes more challenging, it makes the actual administration of town accounts more challenging because we have to get paper in order to do things. Uh, then in terms of our payroll system, it is Harper's, which I say payroll system because it realistically is a system for payroll. It's not a proper human resources information system. We still have to have paper files on our employees for most of the important HR actions because that, this system does not have the capability of tracking them. It has more capability than what we currently use, but not what we need. You can only track two transactions. So if an employee starts in nineteen ninety-five, they leave in nineteen ninety-seven, they're rehired in nineteen ninety-nine, and then terminated in nineteen, or in two thousand one, they're going to have a termination date that is, is in there. And then if they're rehired again afterward, they'll have a hire date that's after their termination date. So it starts to get really confusing in tracking what's actually happening with an employee. So that's why we have to maintain paper files for everything and our reporting on everything HR-related is, is slower than it should be and we have to go through a lot more of a process in order to get things done. So in terms of the actual, um, this is just a shot of Harper's showing everything that I was talking about. Uh, in terms of what I'd like to do is really moving to a, a completely new system, which would be Munis for both payroll, HR, accounts payable, everything. This is just a, a map of Massachusetts provided by Tyler showing the communities that they currently serve, which makes up the bulk of the state. Out in the western part, it's, it's a lot sparser, but those are a lot of the smaller communities that use Vader and, um, for budget reasons have been stuck on something like that. But you see in really the, the four ninety-five corridor, it's very heavily Munis. So this, what we'd like to do is really replace all of these manual paper processes with a centralized system so that we would be able to really bring our operations into the late twentieth century. Now, the first stage would be the core application, and parallel to that would be permitting and code enforcement. We had a demo, uh, may have been a year and a half ago with Munis for their permitting and code enforcement system with the police chief, fire chief, commissioner of inspectional services, and a number of others on a building permit system, so that we would actually have a software package for the building permit application process, so we would no longer have to physically carry plants from the building department to the fire department and all of these other processes related to that. Uh, we can have a, a formal computer system that does it. People could apply for permits online, they could get their status updated, uh, would be a lot more efficient, and it's something that everyone has been interested in, it's just a matter of the cost. Then there are the other steps of the other application parts that we wanna build on so that we could get a fully functional system in. The, the timeline would be that this would be about three-year process from start to finish in order to get everything up and running and built out. Really just some general information on it. I'm not gonna go through everything in detail. If you're bored before going to bed and want some assistance, this may help. Uh, so really just looking at the different modules, what, what's offered, brief descriptions of them, again, not really something that's worth going through in detail because it's, um, it's very granular and.
The cost is probably longer.
The cost is very interesting, uh, but the first thing is SaaS versus self-hosted. SaaS is software as a service, and really the difference between the two is software as a service, the software company really manages it. This is the cloud-based system. This is where all the data lives on their computers versus self-hosted where it is ours. Now, with all of these recent concerns about security, hacks, everything like that, this would be on the software company to provide that security versus us. Now, there, there are several ways of looking at that. One is that, uh, well, we wouldn't be responsible for our own data, so we'd be trusting them to do it, but it is their business. They are a publicly traded company that is huge, so their security is likely to be better than anything that we could come up with. Uh, it also has the additional benefit of they do the maintenance for us. We don't have to maintain the physical infrastructure, we don't have to worry about the servers or anything like that. They have the backup, they have the data recovery, they have everything in place. Now, there is a considerable cost difference between the two. With SaaS, the only thing you pay is annual maintenance. With self-hosted, you have to purchase the licenses, you have to pay the annual maintenance, you have to do the data conversion, and you have to do the implementation. Now, the way that works out is, this is just some detail on, sorry, I keep forgetting that it's not actually my laptop that's powering this because our Wi-Fi is down. Uh, so this is, uh, just a table of showing what the different costs. So this is just a table of showing what the different costs are, and then on SaaS, it's really just the annual maintenance. This is the one-time cost, so on the self-hosted, the one-time cost is on the order of $400,000. That's for purchasing the licenses and everything versus $35,000 for SaaS. Now, the annual cost is where the self-hosted really is far better. It's only about $50,000, which is less than we pay now for our systems, versus $132,000. Now, in terms of what that actually comes out to on a break-even point, it's almost a four-year return on the investment if you do the self-hosted versus the SaaS. But I would still advocate for doing the SaaS because I think that one of the other advantages of that is we could change out modules. With the self-hosted, we would have to decide what we want to do and purchase everything upfront. And it's very difficult to change after that because then you'd have to do a new ramp in implementation. Versus on a SaaS model, it's much more à la carte. You can do the selections, you can turn modules on and off, you can switch it up as your needs change over time. And we also wouldn't have to purchase all the licenses for something that we're not going to realistically be touching for two years upfront, which we would on the self-hosted because you have to buy all the licenses upfront at the same time. So the actual picture on the break-even point would be skewed a little bit further out because on the SaaS model, things wouldn't be coming online on day one and paying the reoccurring cost. But for purposes of discussion, I just put it in there as if we had everything turned on on day one. So that's everything that I have. Any questions?
Questions from the council?
Yes.
Actually, just a question, maybe Terry can answer this. How many IT people do you have on staff?
One and a half.
One and a half in the town, two for the schools, operate just on the screen side, three and a half total, between seven to eight hundred employees.
Yeah, so in my experience doing software, the past, educational software, if we have that capacity, we definitely should be looking at SaaS because even if the cost at some point gets lower, we're going to have a million emergencies hosting this ourselves. It's going to cost us in outsourcing extra people to pay attention to the software. The other question I had is, when you say there's only three options, is there only three options of software that's specifically meant for municipalities? Because you can also hack software somewhere else to save some money.
This being Massachusetts, there are very specific rules and processes that have to be done that are not the same anywhere else in the country. So municipal financial management in Massachusetts is unique with the way we assess property taxes, the way things go into tax title. All of those things are built out in these three software packages. So using something else and trying to get it to work is theoretically possible, but Essella, the vendor who owns SoftRight, I had a conversation with them because they have another financial program, Springbrook, that's used in other municipalities, but they don't sell it in Massachusetts. They just do not offer it because it doesn't meet the specific processes that we have.
Yeah, so I mean, one other comment for the room was just that, you know, there's different types of software, but again, that might be cheaper, but to try and hack it together, you'll end up spending so much money in actually building it out based on our capacity of staff.
And the major advantage of this would be everything is within the same system. So it would be compatible. We would have the information in the town clerk's office to know if someone had not paid for a building permit, and then it's been a year, they apply for a business license, the clerk would have the information to be able to deny them that license because they owe the town money, which is a rule that's in our statutes, but we don't have the mechanisms to enforce that on as regular a basis as would be beneficial.
Does this system save us any money anywhere else within our system? Like, folks go online, they pay their tax bill, they pay their excise and so forth. In looking at your presentation, I noticed there was places for excise and so forth. Is that all integrated into this?
Yes, it is.
On the consumer side?
It could be, and I didn't put any explicit cost savings from anything like that in here because they would all be theoretical, and it's the sort of thing where it would be very easy to overpromise. I think the main savings we'd get would be internal efficiencies and freeing up staff time so that we could actually do more value-added projects rather than just the amount of effort it takes for us to pay an invoice on time.
I think the really most important thing, having a software like this, we track our assets on spreadsheets. So if I need to know how many trucks we had three years ago, Michael would have to go back through three spreadsheets. In the police department, we track everything through the IMC tool, and I can get that information in about five minutes with the right person running the data. So the public records request is a lot more streamlined on PAFs that we've seen lately and other requests like that, you know, pay raises and stipends and all of that becomes a lot more accurate and also a lot less time. Also, it ties in the building department and the assessors department, which really add the value to where we are in new growth. Right now, we're doing that manually, and this would bring that into a computerized age and therefore probably be much more efficient in capturing growth.
What type of training do they offer? Because the technology is always great, but unless people are comfortable using the technology, it doesn't save the time, which is the...
So the trainings are built into the implementation as well as tailoring the system. So that's one of the things that's fantastic for the current staff because you're there while the process is being built out, but then five, 10 years down the line, when there's staff turnover, you don't necessarily preserve that. So with full implementation, full, you know, wiping slate clean, we would be actually producing system design documentation and actually documenting business practices, have policies and procedures guides, and actually go through the full formal process as well as continued regular training so we could actually have the system maintained. That's one of the issues with our current system. The implementation was rushed, it wasn't necessarily, the system is not a horrible system, but our build of it is worse than it should be because things just weren't tailored specifically. Now that I don't know what it was like back then, and the documentation hasn't been maintained, we haven't had training since it was implemented. So this is something that I'd like to fix going forward.
I just want to make sure that I got this right. The one-time cost to put SaaS in is $52,000, and then the recurring cost each year would be $159,000? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So the one-time start-up is $52,000, as opposed to us buying all the stuff ourselves, and then the yearly payment will be $159,000?
Yes. And that's with all of the modules, which is not something we would necessarily do and not necessarily have upfront.
For how long would that $159,000 be guaranteed for? As I said, the line is pretty linear, but I would anticipate that at some point it would go up.
So there are actually, they gave me a quote that was guaranteeing the price for three years with no more than a certain percent increase each year. I believe it was somewhere between 3% and 5% increase each year. No increase between the first year and the second year, but then after that it would be...
So it would be for a three-year contract?
Yes, which is the maximum that we're allowed to enter into with two one-year options to run.
And just to be fully clear, at Munis, we used to have Munis. In 2008, 2009, went to SoftRight from Munis because we couldn't afford it during a financial downturn in which we were closing buildings and laying the police chief amongst other things. So we did have Munis before, and we had them because they were the premier system in Massachusetts. I asked Michael to present this at the staff meeting to the department heads, which he has done. So this is not the first. We wanted to get the internal feedback from the department heads before we came to the council, so.
Question, could you speak a little bit to software updates? So if we purchased all of the software upfront, then are we stuck with that version of the software? Or, you know, and if we do the SaaS, then do we get software updates or improvements along the way?
Yes.
How does that piece work?
A little, with SaaS, absolutely, it's built in. That's one of the other advantages of it. With doing it as a self-hosted, it depends on the scale of the update. Some, you know, if they're updating from, you know, 12.1 to 12.2, then probably, but if they're going from 12 to 13, then maybe not. So it's another advantage of the SaaS.
Any further comments, questions? Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Next thing on the agenda, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is the town council votes to transfer the use of retained earnings, the Harbor Master Waterways, in the amount of $95,000. This hearing is open. I'll ask the town manager to give us an overview. I see the town, is that right? Harbor Master's not here. Could you just give us an overview?
Certainly. You know, this became identified as a need by the Harbor Master. They are operating in their Parker boat, which is not sufficient to go around their island in bad weather. That's an open cabin type of vessel, and during rough water, it just would be foreseeable for them to make their ways to any rescues to assist the fire department. So their CTO had a boat down in Cape Cod that was for sale. Got the price of about $95,000. It's valued at much higher than $95,000, and it has been publicly appraised by a public appraiser, which is included in the motion in the packet. The last fee to Chief Flanagan, they would give us $50,000, $10,000 would be used for the fire department's boat, and $40,000 would come over to offset the expenses of this in February or early March. And then the remaining cost would be made up by selling the Parker. So this has to come out right now from the reserve retained earnings account in order to front the money with the reimbursements coming back to that account.
Questions from the council? Yes.
The finance committee did meet earlier on this motion, and as the town manager just stated, there would be $95,000 coming from retained earnings account balance. And retained earnings for the Harbor Ways is $172,500. But we do feel, from what we've been told by the Harbor Master and CFO, that in the end, it would be a net of $5,000 to $10,000 that would be a reduction in the retained earnings when all is said and done. And we did, the finance committee did approve this unanimously.
Okay. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Nearly none. I'll close this count, this hearing. The next hearing is on solar smart designation and residential solar energy system. I believe we have Frank Nitti here to do a brief presentation. Frank, it's all yours.
Hi, thank you very much for having me. So the purpose of this legislation is to continue the effort that we've been doing here in town, working closely with the building department, to help reduce soft costs and administrative processes for residents to be able to incorporate solar for their homes. This is part of a larger effort where we worked with Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Natick, and Melrose, and Chelsea to get solar smart designation through the Department of Energy. We did achieve that. We received a solar smart bronze designation. If we are able to pass this tonight, we would get our silver designation, which out of all of the communities, the only community that has the gold designation would be Somerville, and that's because they participated in the pilot program for this. So it actually put us at a higher ranking than any of the other communities that participated, including Boston. So being one of the only few communities to get this designation, I think will be a really great story, not just for the town, but for Massachusetts in general, as, you know, Massachusetts is the number one most energy-efficient state in the country, tied with California. But this is an area that we're really lacking on compared to many other states participating in this initiative. So the goal of this is to help residents incorporate solar to their homes more easily by making it a buy rate use.
Yes, the Houst Lawrence Committee met earlier.
Senator Nitti spoke before the committee. The committee has motions coming forward, which will be coming forward under all business to help with some of that.
Any questions from the other members of the council? Hearing none. It's open to the public. Any questions from the public? Hearing none. This public hearing is closed. Next on the agenda is public comment. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. My name is Stephanie Recchia. I'm from PC six. First, I'd like to congratulate John Recchia on your new position as town council president. Congratulations to the other new councilors. I'm here this evening representing One Winthrop. One Winthrop is a newly formed community initiative. Our mission is to promote peace, diversity, justice, equity, and inclusion for all in Winthrop. Our research has shown that most surrounding towns and cities, including Boston, Chelsea, Cambridge, Somerville, Melrose, Wakefield, Malden, Medford, Swam Scott, Salem, Marblehead, Belmont, Arlington, Ed Brookline, Anne Lynn, all have a human rights commission or a similar group whose mission is to address discrimination in their towns and to hold educational forums to promote inclusion. Winthrop does not have any such committee or any recognized government entity where one can bring concerns of prejudice, hate crimes, or discriminatory practice. The more members of One Winthrop have talked with persons in our town, the more we have learned of instances of overt racism and intolerance and more subtle microaggressions towards others who do not identify with the majority. One Winthrop would like to see a government committee that seeks to welcome all and to stamp out discrimination. We are aware that a diversity, inclusion, and accessibility committee is being considered. We would urge you to formalize this committee, and we would like to see it to fruition. In this same spirit, we are also very much aware of the search for a town manager. One Winthrop would request that the search committee apply the same role that the NFL employs to interview at least one candidate who is not an able-bodied white male. One Winthrop would like to partner with all of you, and we would look forward to working with you in the coming year. If you have not seen our pledge cards, I would welcome you to take one this evening and to look at that. Thank you so much.
Karen?
Yes, first of all, just want to welcome all the new councilors, and I'm looking forward to working with you on the finance committee to do a budget for FY nineteen. Second of all, I'm hoping, this is my third request, that the council will consider discussion on the ferry, pros and cons. Do we go forward with it or don't we? I think we've dabbled with that quite, quite long enough. So I certainly hope we get it onto the agenda and get a discussion going.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? Sean Driscoll?
Sean Driscoll, thirty-five. I actually got two cases to this. One being a resident. My house was hit pretty good, my whole neighborhood was hit pretty good with that last storm coming up, and I just want to publicly thank Winthrop Fire Department, did a great job. Steve Carroll and his DPW crew, with the limited resources they have, unbelievable. The Winthrop Police, and all the department heads and employees throughout the town that helped us out during that time and reached out a hand. The Marriott up in East Boston, Stevie Nealon, really took care of my family for four nights, which was great. And I appreciate everyone's help, and I think sometimes you hear all the negative stuff that you get for feedback, probably during this public comment period, but this was a good thing for me to see because until you need them, you don't know what you have. And I just want to thank them up and down. And I just want to thank them up and down for all their help, my whole neighborhood and the whole town. Because I know some other areas are hit pretty bad as well, and I'm sure they did the same thing there. My second phase in public comment is department head town Winthrop. I've been here, department head now, 19 years coming up in February. And since October, a sense of professionalism has been brought back to the organization, throughout the department head. And I just want to thank, from the department heads, to Mr. Delahanty, Chief Delahanty, Town Manager Delahanty. There's your guy right there. Okay? There's your guy. I know you've got this public search going, and we want to have committees and all that. But what concerns me about it is you don't have one department head on any search committee, I believe. But I will say, you have a guy who cares, which is the number one thing in leadership. Once you care, everything takes care of itself, as far as I'm concerned. He knows the fabric of the community. I think he has a good pulse in the community. And I will tell you, I don't know if he wants the job or doesn't, but since October, the sense of caring and reaching out on all matters, I haven't seen in a long time. And I will tell you, he's professional and he deserves every right. If he wants that job, I think he's interviewed enough for the last four months and probably can save the town some money in the process. And I thank him. I thank his family. Because as you know, as department heads, and you know, public safety, as he knows, and Steve, we get pulled all different directions, different times of days, and he's managed so well. And I really appreciate his efforts as a, not only as a town department head, but a citizen of the community. Thank you.
And for the, we're just gonna do Mr. President all these things. We gotta thank the MWRA for this whole storm. When Steve's salters were down, before this storm even approached, they were all salting our roads. During the flood, we had as many houses flooded. And it was very time-sensitive. We're trying to pump the houses so they could service their heat, so the following day, the houses wouldn't freeze solid. They brought in, you know, we have 160 gallon mini pumps. They brought in 500 gallon mini pumps, truck mounted. It was tough weather to be working out in. So they pumped with us for two days. Then we needed the high school dugout. They put three 10-wheelers, a plow truck, and a front-end loader from 3:00 in the afternoon till midnight. So the MWRA was great. Don Manning, who's not here, kept my guys that were down the point for, I think, nine hours in hot meals. The residents down the point Shirley provided dry socks. Blackstrap fed all first responders. You just pull your plow out front or your truck out front, you go in. They fed everybody from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM at night. Lastiester as well, and the community at large, I think, appreciated the first responders because, you know, my guys gained 10 pounds. So overall, as Sean mentioned, it was a community outpouring during what was really some tough weather. So, that's all. Thank you, chief. Anyone else on the public comment? Correspondents here on none, I would believe. Committee reports, finance. Jimmy?
Finance committee met this evening in council chambers. Present were just about everybody. Present were all members of the council, including the finance committee itself, which myself, Council Kristofa, Council LaCanti. Also, there were CFO Perez, Harbor Master Powers, and all councilors. The only one item on the agenda was the use of retained earnings, as we just discussed, of $95,000 to purchase and equip a patrol boat for the Harbor Master. And after lengthy discussion and lots of facts being brought out, it was voted unanimously to approve, and we will take that up under all business.
Thank you, Councilor Terry. Rules and Laws.
The Rules and Laws Committee meeting was held this evening at 6:00 PM. Present were myself, Councilor Engman, Councilor LaCanti, and Council President Vecchia. Also joining us was Frank Nitti, who spoke on the issue early. He's our regional energy manager. We met, discussed the issue of solar energy systems as a permitted accessory use in residential zones. A motion was made to adopt the recommendations of the planning board, who has also held meetings on this issue. And we will be bringing those recommendations forward under all business.
Thank you, Councilor Boncory.
Miller Field.
Jimmy?
Miller Field met on January 11th. And just discussion on ongoing on Miller Field. One thing, I actually like to say that, you know, the beach project in itself has been given a lot of grief because of the rocks, and I'm one of the major complainers about it. But I will say that it's been fantastic for storm prevention. And, you know, one of the concerns when we started the Miller Field project and we spoke to the contractors and we discussed possibility of going to turf and we discussed the possibility of having sea water, salt water, on that turf. And we were told that if that's the case, if you thought that that was a very good chance, they probably would not go with the turf. And we felt pretty confident in the project that was done at the beach, and we went with the turf. And we got very nervous after the storm, and there was not one drop of ocean water there. And the turf held up tremendously. And we were discussing this with Speaker of the House DeLeo and thanked him for his efforts with the protection of the beach. And he kind of joked a little bit and said that he had just recently received a call from the town manager Gloucester, who were not as fortunate as us. And they have a brand-new field that was under four feet of water. So the field held up tremendously as far as the storm goes, which was great news. Other things that we did discuss, there was, there's a possibility of having a... The track surface, as you see it now, which we have for a Thanksgiving Day game, is a black track surface, which is a finished track surface. But there is a paint that goes over it, which is textured, which is supposed to be done in the spring. And we were given the opportunity to take a $66,000 credit and not have it painted and remain black. We did not vote on that. We, you know, so I don't want to say what we're gonna do or not gonna do. But I think that the failing is to maintain the color that was, to maintain a color that was promised. The other thing that was discussed is the, the fieldhouse. The fieldhouse is, you know, for that field to be complete, the fieldhouse needs to be completed. For us to potentially turn it over to the schools or whatever dispensation we end up with the field, that field has to be completed in order for that to be done. So we're looking into all possibilities to try to get the fieldhouse done as quickly as possible. There are some minor still things that were left over, which are all on track and good to go. And that was about it. We have a meeting scheduled. Karen?
February 21st.
February 21st is the next meeting for the Miller Field Committee.
Thank you, Councilor. Any questions on the local? Neighborhood precinct five meeting. Peter?
Yep, we met on the 3rd, a couple of days after New Year's, with members of the community. We had a, it was a decent-sized crowd. We had, it was the night before the storm, so I think a lot of people were hunkering down. But it was good. We went over some common concerns about moving forward with the landscape design down the center, some potential developments. Got ahead of some of, some things that the neighborhood might be concerned with down the center. I addressed a lot of these issues with the town manager, and he's very responsive. And we got a lot of answers, I think, into the community. Hopefully, with all the work that the town has been doing as far as identifying where the zoning lines are and what's allowable and what is not, I think that that's gonna be a major step forward in addressing a lot of concerns that individuals in the neighborhood have. So I think that that's gonna be very exciting to hear what, what comes out of that investigation, if you want to call it that. But another thing we talked about was getting new individuals involved in a lot of committees. I don't know if I mentioned that, Terry, but I think he might have read our minds at the meeting. We got a list of all of the openings on the town committees. And hopefully, we can get some new faces and old faces as well on those committees. So I thank everybody at the town for their work addressing these issues. And I think it's gonna be an important first step in a conversation that needs to be had with the neighborhood if we are to do things down the center in a meaningful way.
Thank you, Councilor Kristofa. Town manager's report.
Certainly, I just want to reiterate the, the work that had gone into the storm preparation and response and now recovery. And, you know, the storm has still left a lot of people impacted in the Morton Street, Pico, Shirley Street area and Point Shirley area. So we're still working with those families. We're urging anyone that has any damage to go onto our website, download the MEMA, personal, personal damage report, and get it into the town manager's office by the 21st. We're working with the fire chief with MEMA to see what, if we're gonna actually qualify for any declaration here in Massachusetts. I've sent the, what we're doing over to Mayor Revere to see if he would do the same thing, because they do it by county. So it's a $10 million damage total by county before they can even qualify for either low-interest loans or state of federal funds for this. So that's the importance, I think, the message I want to get out there, is that people are still being harmed by the storm. Barbara Pucci from Capic has been a good ally and a good friend and someone I've been able to call on to help certain people out that qualify under the income levels. Some older people that cannot afford and didn't have insurance. Barbara Pucci certainly, from my understanding from a family member, Capic was out of hotel this weekend with all the forms and working on the weekend with these people to get them back to where they need to be as quickly as possible. So moving forward, we have a vulnerability study that is done and is on our website on coastal, coastline vulnerability. And, you know, by 2070, some of these water infiltrations will, will increase more inland in our bay and bay areas. So we certainly want to pay attention to that study. And in the process, we're gonna have some public meetings, get some public input on that study, and, and then work closely with our council and state legislators on what can be done to actually redirect any infiltration. So, you know, I know this is one bad storm. I watched Channel 5 the other night. It said, after the last storm, everyone was talking about the same thing. And then everyone went silent on, on this issue until this storm. So we gotta make sure that, that we don't do that. Talking with Barbara Pucci and how we can get some state or some of our earmark money to Capic in a reserve account over there for when something like this does happen. We're not running around and certainly I just want to thank the Speaker of the House and the Senator for working the inside lines over there to get the money released to Capic. Because they were waiting for an earmark, and they couldn't help any of these people until that earmark was released. And they got that paperwork Wednesday to be signed. And that's when I got the phone calls saying, don't worry about it, we can help these people. So it was a lot of, a lot of people involved in helping these people. It wasn't just my office. And of course, Joe and Larissa from my office have been really close, working the phones with these people and making sure they get the paperwork. So it's a, it's a whole team effort in the preparation, the response, and the recovery. So I know everyone thinks, oh, we'll get another storm, and we're looking at that for tonight. The DPW director has declared a snow, pot and no parking ban in effect at 6:00 AM in the morning tomorrow for tomorrow's storm. We're hoping that we get the lesser of the, of the amounts, but we're still helping people recover as well, but also preparing for the next storm. A fire station did take some, some damage on the last storm, and we'll have to look at some repairs. Chief Flanagan's working on some quotes to the chimney. And they had some wind coming down into the chimney and actually driving up the copper monoxide inside that building to the levels where they had to shut their burners off. So they were out in the cold pumping. And then going back to the firehouse, that was 27 degrees in the, in the, in the engine area where they come in and pull the engine into. So we're looking to get that fixed as quickly as possible.
That's the beach?
That's the beach house.
Plus, we were out, I would have paid for it.
I think the beach house we were out, just the beach house.
But it's only the beach that, for the, the weekend was without heat.
The fire truck, obviously, everyone is well aware, that took some damage. The initial call was for a house fire. And they upgraded the, the call, the regional dispatch center, which made it a more needed response for the truck to be in a certain position. And in doing that, it took in water in the, in the engine areas. That is being shipped back to the manufacturer for some repairs. The good news, it's not totaled. Bad news, it's not totaled. Because then we gotta deal with the warranty on the repairs. So, you know, we're working with the insurance company, and the Chief Flanagan's been working that very hard as well to make sure his firefighters have adequate resources here locally. There was a, coming up on the new business, a motion for $6,000 to be transferred from certain accounts into the council aging account for an incident that we all had, all our employees come down with the flu. That was the day before. We were supposed to have our Christmas holiday celebration there at the senior center. We took measures to clean the whole senior center by a private company that would come in, specializes in that. Having all your employees call in sick with the flu and having a vulnerable population in a building has to be taken a lot more serious than, than a non-vulnerable population in that. So that's why that's a one-time expense, a one-time occurrence. Which certainly, I know the school department has similar issues that they've done prior in the same manner. The Compact Community Regionalization and Efficiency Grant has been awarded. We signed on with our neighboring towns, Chelsea, Revere, Winthrop, and Saugus for that grant. And basically, it's gonna take our opiate work and study it across lines and tell us how we can more efficiently work amongst each other in a more responsive nature. So that grant did get issued to us, and we're looking forward to working with MAPC on that. I'll be creating the Lewis Lake Tide Gate Committee as a director from the DEP. When we pulled our permit, the Tide Gate Committee was supposed to be established. Our permit requires certain people to be on that committee. The Army Corps of Engineers DEP, members of that committee, as well as the town manager's office, DPW director, and someone from the local conservation commission. Those are dictated to us by our permit, and we're supposed to keep an eye on the tide levels at Lewis Lake and report back to the Army Corps of Engineers. So we'll be, that's been lacking, and they're on top of us for that. So we need to, I'll move on that ASAP and create that committee. There is a motion that'll be coming up for $75,000 that's to replace a DPW truck. We had one that came back online, one that did come back from the dealership. But we still have several that'll be surplus. At next meeting, I'll be provided a list from the DPW director of which ones that are just not worth fixing and to surplus those. But immediately to start this eight-week to 10-week process, if not longer, and get the truck here and available, I'm suggesting that we, we take this money out of our capital stabilization and also budget for another truck during the budget, budget season to be effective July 1st, try to catch them up on these machines that they don't have, which did not hamper or hinder their response. We do have a company on retainer as needed and called by the Director of Public Works to help us with trucks. So we, we use that company last storm as well. Center Business District Analysis will be coming next meeting. Certainly, it's something that we're, we're just stuck on one portion of it. Actually, when the Center Business Zone was created, with Act 1907. Right now, we're taking your town reports, and we still can't find it, 1922. They added to the business zone in the center and referred to a comment in the planning board minutes that annual town meeting that in the last 10 years, that business zones were being created in Winthrop. So we're working our way back to find out exactly when that was. And then we'll have that report finished. If we cannot locate it, we're gonna conclude our report and submit it the next council meeting and just let people know where we stand and what we found and who's impacted and why they're impacted. Also, at the next meeting, I'll be submitting an updated infrastructure project report on exactly where we are on timelines and also where we are with finances. And also asking authority to borrow more than was, was allowed at 8.5 billion under a motion in August. The project is more of a $12 million project, but construction estimates now closer to the actual project implementation. And certainly would be willing to discuss any issues. The council... council has with that authorization. We're almost, we're a chicken and an egg game here. If we don't do the project, we can't have development. If we don't get development, we can't have new growth. So it is certainly, you know, tighten our belt time if we want this project done. And the projects that we were trying to get done might have to be put in the back burner and we have to put everything towards the center project and you know, try to maintain fire apparatuses, DBW trucks and police cruisers in the budget itself. And there's many, many different ways you can do this on bonding and Michael will cringe. You can certainly borrow against your free cash with the hopes of regaining the free cash later, as well as some assessments that the town can authorize at the council level and then also at the voting box level where the public would have to vote for confirmation of any of those assessments. So that will also be in my financial analysis report for the Center Business District. So I know, that's three for next meeting. I'm keeping track of it. So we've been, you know, busy doing other things as well, but this is very important. Work as the center is the top priority. Those people are expecting the answers and we understand that. We want to get them the answers. We want to get them the right answers. And I know Council Christopher, we have, you have another meeting coming up.
Yeah.
On what's that date, the 26th?
24th.
24th. So I'll be going to the precinct meeting on, on the 24th with Council Christopher to try to address any, any questions they have during that meeting. Which is, I'm just looking for some direction on Millers Field. I know there's, you know, talk at the town was going to keep the, the Millers Field and run it and the schools, we're going to get it back. I just need to know the will of the council. It's been, my understanding as a voter and not as a police chief or town manager, that it was always going to be returned to the schools. So I, if that's not going to be the case, it depends on who's does all the planning. And we've got to get ready to open. So it's a lot of work that's has to, we need lead time with a lot of this work. And certainly, you know, I, I think if there's interest in having open hours, the school department needs to know that and how many open hours per week because it matters on how much money they have to put aside to run that field. So that concludes my report.
Council Terry. Thanks so much, you've been busy. Question, I, it's whatever it is, January 16th, I guess, we've only had one significant snowstorm, but how does that affect snow and ice budget? Do we have any figures as of now for that?
$42,000 has been spent for the last storm. That's not including the prep work that get the trucks ready and everything else. Steve, you have a talk on that line?
That's the storm alone, $42,000 for that particular storm and then the subsequent snow removal. To date, snow and ice is probably in the 150,000 range.
Now, have we done an analysis yet on how, if it's positive, negative impact? I know these are things we're going to have to discuss as we go further with plows and sanders and everything else, on the cost, how it's impacted subcontracting out rather than doing it ourselves. Do you have any idea on that yet?
We don't have all that much data at this point. I mean, we just brought them on after the last storm. I can tell you that there's, obviously would be savings with vehicle maintenance, but as a director of public works, having the control to be able to deploy your trucks when you need them in an instant is a lot better product for the community, in my opinion, you know, to have those vehicles in our fleet. Right now, we have 39 registered vehicles, of which 20 of them are 15 years or older. And of those vehicles that are 15 years or older, 12, 20 years or older. So we should be on some sort of, you know, fleet maintenance where we have vehicles that 10 years or less, you know, that's the goal. I'm working closely with Terry to try to figure out, you know, how to, how to approach that and with my Perez, you know, capital planning. So yeah, I guess I always want to have the vehicle and the equipment, you know, with my, with my crew. Now, there's pros and cons. I mean, you know, storms obviously haven't, we contract out anyway, so I don't think we're ever going to have the depth to be able to do shifts. We just don't have that capacity. At one time, when you had 50 employees down there, you may have been able to rotate people out. Right now, 23 guys barely covers the roots that we need. So we're all in, hands on deck for every storm. So they become long and, and you know, no one goes home until it's done. So doesn't really answer your question, but yeah, I guess having newer vehicles and, you know, for us to, for us to be able to deploy and operate as, as we fit, I think is a better product.
I just think the motion tonight, myself and the director and the, I talked to the finance director on what type of vehicle do we want to buy? What gets us biggest bang for the buck right now? And we went to a midsize truck and this is not the big one that's costing 165,000, but it's not a little one. So you can use it for snow plowing and salting, but also in the summertime, you can use it to dig and excavate and put dirt in and move it around. Those bigger trucks is really where our analysis is going to take place and whether we can lease them from, you know, November to March for cheaper than buying them for us contracting the bigger trucks out. But we do have one big, or two big trucks in service right now. One was the one that just came back from the dealership and the other one that was taken off the road has been approved to go back on the road. So we're back to two big trucks back on the road.
First of all, again, I echo Mr. John's comments. I think DBW, fire, police, everybody in the town just did an incredible job. Not everyone's always going to be happy, there's always going to be a little bit here and there, but I can't think of a storm that was handled better and more professionally than in the time remand, so I thank you for that. One more question. You mentioned IT earlier and we all know we're out and I know it's affecting schools too. Do we have a timeframe on that?
The walkthroughs are being conducted tomorrow with the company that's doing the changeover. All this, all the equipment has been delivered to the New Hampshire office. It's all being bench tested there because it was more efficient to do it that way. So when they come on site, it's all bench tested, it's all ready to go live. You know, I'm conservatively, I'm going to say a month and a half. You know, this is not, you know, planning with the schools is the tricky part and depends how soon we can get in the schools. These are contractors going in the schools who want less disruption. Is it better to do the schools during February vacation? All of that is being worked with the superintendent of schools. So certainly we're starting with the Cummings and Fort Banks, those are our hubs, and then moving into the town buildings from there.
Any other questions? Thank you. I will cover the school department update from the school committee. The superintendent reported on the flooding at the school during this last storm, how it affected the band room, the stage, the longship room. I know the contractor was in there the following morning evaluating. It was, it was from a sprinkler system, as I understand. And I don't know if any repairs have been made or if they put some insulation where that happened.
Yeah, right now, they're leaving the tiles off so the heat gets up there. You know, they could actually see the breath of the maintenance crew and the building maintenance person we have on the town side when they went up and stuck their head up there. Those are acoustic ceiling tiles, which shouldn't, but it prevents the heat from getting up there too, which shouldn't really matter in a space like that. It should have been, you know, according to the building inspector insulated better up there and maybe having a heating system up there. They did raise a concern with it last year under our, under our guarantees and warranties. So it's always been an issue and then this time the temperatures just dropped, you know, as everyone knows, unrealistically low that have that freeze up.
But I know the superintendent was quite impressed. Everybody pitched in to get the water out of there pretty quickly. They had a company come in to vacuum all the water out. They were able to, you know, to save all the equipment and so forth. And they even made it so that the band did perform on the stage that followed Wednesday night, which was a good thing. Budget meetings with the principals are underway. They've given some update on the playground repairs and relative to the playground, there's weekly checks that are being done by the maintenance staff to make sure that what we have there is safe, that it's ongoing work. That was basically it was a very short meeting. Next item on the agenda is old business and town council to vote to transfer the use of retained earnings, the retained earning Humber Master Waterways in the amount of 95,000. This was, came out of the finance committee with a positive recommendation, so I don't believe it needs a second. Any question on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is the town council established a public safety building committee, feasibility public safety building complex. I had a discussion with the town manager today. I don't think we're really in a position yet to seek this committee. Maybe Chief Flanagan, you can give us an update on the RFQ.
Well, the RFQ went out and five companies did return them and they are HKT Architects Incorporated for MedFit, T-Gas, the Galanti Architectural Studios from Cambridge, Allen Leve Architects Associates from Linfield, Context Architecture from Boston, Kstol Boos Association also from Boston. So we are starting to go through those and we will have a committee on a point system. You don't necessarily have to take the cheapest. We're not obligated. Who has done the most public safety or fire, police buildings in the area and we'll reach out to all their last projects are listed in the books. So we'll start to get some feedback from the other communities that are high and are putting something together for you.
We did mention, I know it's, it's been in the newspaper, it's on the website, that we're looking for folks to volunteer for various committees in town. So if you have a committee that you'd like to serve on, please check the town website. There's openings, we have a ton of openings across the board and if anybody's interested in serving on this committee, please send in their resume. Next item, the Witherford Middle School Site rezoning recommendations from the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee. We're trying, we're still, we still have not got the middle school zone rezoned. And this coming, all right, January 22nd, there will be a special meeting with the planning board. Terry, you want to expand on that, exactly what's going on?
Sure. Yeah, this matter has been before the planning board. They couldn't come to consensus on the zoning of this building. The planner will be at this meeting to help them along and try to facilitate the correct zoning and advising the planning board. And at the same meeting, I think there's some pre-submissions that the planner will also be assisting the planning board with.
Was there a deadline set?
At last meeting, we had said a 30-day deadline and I don't know.
So that was prior?
That was prior to disinformation that they're not meeting till 22nd.
Yeah, the last meeting was on the 2nd, am I correct, of January? So this is still within the 30-day.
Well, hopefully we can move that along. That's, you know, it's been five years we've known that place was going to be, you know, available.
Yes.
I think we need to move it forward for many reasons, for many reasons.
And the input?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention since these things happen to follow each other, even on our old business and the agenda, but from what I've heard from going to these different meetings that both the planning board and the middle school site redevelopment committee are looking for some direction from the council because they've heard, especially with the outgoing council, there was a lot of information about whether or not there'd be a public safety building going on the middle school site. And I think we really need to have that discussion as a council to give these people direction because if you're going to zone it for a public safety building, you're going to zone it for economic development, it's two different ways to approach the zoning. So I don't know if we can maybe do that or put that on the agenda for the next time just to give some direction to these committees. Otherwise, I think we're setting them going up to fail.
Just, you might not be aware of this, but our legal counsel had given a legal opinion to the planning board and spelled out each zoning and what zoning could both, do both and accomplish both. And the Center Business District could hold a public safety zone in it as well as a development zone. So certainly the KMP law had opined and they have received that a couple of meetings ago on, on the most favorable action. So you know, I'm certainly not suggesting, I'm just wanting you to be informed and up to speed on what they've been provided.
Yeah, I just, just to frugally say, I mean, we've already gone through a public process vetting that site for economic development and I think now we have a sort of monkey wrench to deal with the public safety building. Both are extremely important. One of them generates some money to pay for the other one. And so I don't want to see two committees basically competing with the same space. I don't know if we can make a, or at least have a discussion about what are the rules of the game as far as where, what is going to go, where these different items are going to go.
Well, I think this meeting on the 22nd is going to be a good start in trying to move this thing along by having the town planner there who was well qualified to, you know, differentiate what can go there under what zoning, maybe that either one, as you mentioned, could go there. So hopefully we can get that somewhat resolved. We'll put it on the agenda, you know, for the next meeting as well to discuss. Any further comment from any?
We haven't even put the public safety committee together yet to look at any sites, whether they're looking at that site or other sites in town. So that has to be done as soon as we can.
I think the charge of that committee has to, has to make sure what the council will its. And I think the charge of the committees, you know, the more concrete you can give them the direction at the beginning and formation of that committee, the easier it's going to be for that committee.
Do we, do we know how long this process of obtaining the information about the public safety building will take? Because until we get the information on the public safety building, the site is definitely going to be one that's considered from everything I've heard. That's going to prolong, it's going to make the timeline as to any decisions on development that much further out. How long of a process are we looking at as far as getting those answers?
Well, as soon as we retain the engine in for them, we can give you more concrete, but however long it takes us to review them, they're going to push them out. You know, I think the economic development of the middle school reuse committee, excuse me, has a charge to report back in June. You know, realistically, I foresee that they come in and they make their presentation and anyone else, like, we got to put this out to RFP to see what other developers might be interested and have everyone come in and present. And, and one of the factors, if the public safety committee looks at that site, they need to come in and present as well. And I think it's the council's duties as well as mine is to help you as long as I'm here, is to formulate what's the cost versus what's the benefit and what benefits the town more and then, and then where do we put a public safety building? We've kind of built out and we got to be careful of flood zones and stuff like that. So you know, we did, I think the charge needs to be not one specific building, but a consensus of several locations around town. But the council certainly, it begins with you and deciding where do you want, want to go, how do you want the RFP to go out and what do you want to hear and what's the money aspect of it is, those are policy decisions. And of course, as someone's, you know, is certainly offended by your decision, they have the right to go to the ballot box and get a petition put together to, to overrule the council and everyone's aware of that. So I don't think we're going to, you know, you might have competing interests, but it stops here, right? And then the people who don't like that decision can counteract that.
I would say the council members, you know, it's going to be a couple of weeks before this public safety committee comes together. I think give it some thought to Terry's point of what you want the charge of that committee to be. I would like to be broad, that they look at areas, you know, that are, that are compatible for emergency building, but it could be separate buildings. It could be one building with police and fire, it could be separate buildings. So I think it should be open and not stressed to go in one specific, you know, footprint in the town. That's my personal opinion. But give it some thought and we'll discuss it, you know, we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay?
So I think, isn't that the purpose of the RFQ?
That's what the feasibility, it's going to, what they're going to do is just a random number. They're going to take the needs of a faulty member of a police department servicing 18,000 people, the same with fire, how much square footage they need. Now they can look at a few sites that we put forward, you know, NFPA and some of the things that regulate building, public safety buildings. Technically, the NFP wants you to be able to pull out on an apron with fire apparatus before exiting a sidewalk or a public street. We pull right out, one foot out, we're out on a public sidewalk in a, in a very busy district. But that's what's going to really dictate where you go. So you know, we've been very careful not to take, you know, we gave up the Shirley Street School, the School, the Dowraco School, Fort Banks over the years. Fort Banks was available when they were doing fire studies before, and they wanted to develop it. So, it's getting very critical what we're going to do and how many spaces are available. But that would be the RFP job, RFQ job.
And then there comes the issue of financing this, and is the community willing to finance a public safety building? You know, and if the answer is yes, then we know. If the answer is no, then what do you do? Then we have to bring it up to handicapped accessibilities on both stations and everything else, so.
Okay. The next item is solar spot designation in residential solar energy zoning change.
Yes.
Came out of Rules Committee.
Yes, the Rules Committee met tonight, and we adopted some changes that the planning board sent over to us, and it was a unanimous vote in our committee. And I'm putting forward the following amendments to our bylaws. And we would ask for a positive vote on these. The first one is in Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17.04, and it's 17.04.50. Definitions. We want to add the following definitions. Solar energy system active. Active solar energy system means a solar energy system whose primary purpose is to harvest energy by transforming solar energy into another form of energy or transferring heat from a collector to another medium using mechanical, electrical, or chemical means. The second definition is solar energy system roof mounted. We'd say roof mounted solar energy system means an active solar energy system that is structurally mounted to the roof of a building or a structure. That's the first change. The second change is Chapter 17.12.120, and that's accessory uses. We want to add the words roof mounted solar energy system to the use table is a permitted accessory use in residential zones. The next amendment is to amend Section 17.12.120A, which is Residential A District, and add there Section 7, active solar energy system. The next amendment is amendments in Section 17.12.120B, which is the multifamily residential district, and to add the words in multifamily developments, the following accessory uses may be included if reserved for the occupant's use. Administrative offices, recreation rooms, common laundry room, swimming pool, piers, wharfs, and this is what's being added, active solar energy systems and other recreational facilities. So, in that 120B, the words are being added in the middle are active solar energy systems. The next amendment is Section 17.12.1203, which is Business and Manufacturing Districts. We want to add the words there as Section 9, we're adding the words active solar energy systems. And the final amendment is an amendment to 17.12.130, which is the table of use and regulations. And they were adding under permitted uses, roof mounted solar energy systems in residential A, B, C, B, A, center business, and LM. Everybody on the council should have had this, who came in with the agenda, so.
Does anybody want that repeated? That motion is out of committee. Do I hear any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a technical point. I believe the charter requires this to be published in the newspaper at least seven days before its final passage. What is our normal process for doing that?
This was, this was.
That was already.
Oh, it was already advertised. Yep.
The council clerk usually takes the.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, you have a question? Procedural, just to go back to the first item on the old business, I believe that that would, should have required a roll call vote. I'd like to just revoke that, just to be.
Change of hands.
Okay. Then we will tip a roll call vote.
Change of hands. Councilor Ringman?
Yes.
Councilor Callow?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Cherry?
Yes.
Councilor Sirota?
Yes.
Councilor McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilor Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Boncorry?
Yes.
President Becke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Last item on the old business is the town manager search. I believe the applications have to be in by the 27th, so the search committee will be getting resumes within 10 days after that. So, that's where that all is. As folks though know, there were 11 original applications that were submitted, four of which were withdrawn, so the pool was very, very small, to say the least. And we hope to wrap that up. Terry is with us, whether you like it or not for another 90 days.
My loyalty contacts.
Of the new business, town council transfers $75,000 from capital stabilization fund to the general fund for a DPW truck.
Motion refer to finance?
A motion to refer to finance. Wait a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Next item is town council transfers $6,000 from the town council reserve fund to the state sanitation of the council on aging building. Do I hear a motion?
I would turn a motion to refer to the finance committee, but with the question, is this an emergency situation?
It's been done. We have the bill, so.
We have the bill, so we have 30 days to pay the bill.
Yeah, it's usually 30 days. We can ask him to extend it.
Motion to approve?
Motion to go with the finance.
Okay. Second? Second, finance, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, for finance. And the last item on the new business is the council clerk position for time, which is the will of the council.
I would make a motion that we send this to a joint committee of the committee on committees and the finance committee, because the committee on committees usually does the appointments, but we need the finance committee to set up a funding for this position.
Second.
So, I would ask for, we send.
And it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Council President? Yes. I'd ask the council clerk to post a finance committee meeting on February 6 at 6:30 PM at the council chambers, and please advertise for the truck. Public comment? Yes, sir.
Hello, Council President. My name is Bob Carroll, precinct 6. I also have the unique position of being both on the planning board and on a ad hoc committee for the economic development of the central business district. And part of that, sorry, I'm online. So, it was basically a master planning process. It was a year long. We had lots of input from a big cross section of town and sort of what would, what needs to be happening there. It also unearthed lots of information, many of it negative things about what's going on in terms of economic trends in the town from Collins Report, about retail leakage, vacant storefront percentages and things that are trending in opposite directions of our neighbors of similar size and within the 495 area and Massachusetts generally. So, these issues were issues that the master plan were meant to address. So, just to remind folks that that master plan was the basis of the CBD's infrastructure grant that we're all very happy that we received and that was, you know, used for that, but there were some folks at town hall and on the committee that helped put that together and was adopted by the Winthrop Town Council. So, as it stands, the master plan, which is not a guaranteed in stone written one way to do it, has flexibility, but was something that the town council did adopt. Most importantly, I think the master plan was meant to guide both Winthrop and its future choices, but also the planning board from just looking at individual developers that come down the road in vacuums. And so, I am just slightly concerned about two items. Is that that these trends, these economic trends are continuing to sort of move negatively while we're waiting to make some economic improvements? So, I think haste makes waste in that sense, that we need to be careful about what we do, but I think also just waiting too long is the opposite of that, where those vacant storefronts aren't going to become unvacant without kind of help, whether it's the center project or development nearby, i.e. the middle school site. So, that's one issue that I would just urge some pace to the decisions. Secondly, is the public, the idea of we absolutely have need for, on the public service side, the police department, fire department, absolutely key and important to the fabric of our community. What I see, though, is a jump, one jump to making it one building. And I would just urge us to have an open mind about trying to keep at least one option on the table as it being two pieces, because what I'm concerned about is the committee that's focused on making a public service building is that a public service building will need a public service sized footprint, and ipso facto, the only place that the public service building footprint will fit is the middle school site. So, if we do want to honestly keep our options open, I think there should be some direction given to that committee to be looking at these two things, not completely in a vacuum one another. There could be some opportunity for savings if they are together. But there are opportunities to have two smaller buildings, and that might be easier to deal with on multiple sites than one larger building on one site. So, that's the only thing I would say to that. And again, this is not a sort of taste great, less filling. It's not sort of economics versus cops or whatever. That's not what we're talking about here. I'm just trying to kind of keep the conversation open so the result is not predetermined. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, I think the RFQ does that, so just wanted to make sure.
Public operations, upcoming events, 19th, 20th, and 2018 annual MMA, which just about every councilor is going to, I think, which is good. January 27 at 7:00 PM, the award ceremony and kickoff dinner at the Cottage Park Yard Club by the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce. February 6, 2018, joint meeting of the town council and the school committee to appoint the school committee member whose vacancy exists now because I'm the town council president. And finally, again, committee openings. We got a bunch. I haven't spoken to our clerk yet, so I don't know if you've got any. You got a good one, just? Please. I will. We have two openings on the beautification committee, two openings on the board of appeal, an opening on the licensing board, citizens advisory committee, finance, economic development citizens advisory, one opening, harbor management committee, two openings, park committee, four openings, and scholarship committee, one opening. And of course, there's the school committee opening, one there, and as we spoke about tonight, the public safety building committee.
I think.
And the board of health, yes.
Council President, do we also have, still have a vacancy on the board of health?
Yes, I just kind of shoved that in.
Oh, you didn't? I didn't catch.
So, with that, I want to sustain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.